Buenos dias, senador Telo Tidegui, and Biba Meschamoro. This public hearing is called to order, and the time now is 5:00 after 8:00 a.m. in the morning. I apologize for the tardiness, we had some technical difficulties. Good morning to you all, and those who might be watching from home, and those who are appearing before the committee today. Welcome to the People's House. For the record, today is Wednesday, March 12, 2025. This hearing will be conducted by myself, Senator Telo Tidegui, Chairwoman of the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement. Phew, that was a lot. To comply with the open government law, notice of this hearing was disseminated to all senators and the public at large via email and published in the Guam Daily Post on Wednesday, March 5, 2025, and the second notice on March 10, 2025. Notices of this hearing was also available on the legislative website, as well as the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. Portal, I will be... I'd like to welcome my colleagues who are joining me today, our Vice Speaker, Speaker Tony Ada. Good morning, sir. And of course, my Vice Chair is Senator Chris Barnett. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this morning. We have five bills on the agenda. Will be first to discuss is Bill 52-38COR, Bill 53-38COR, Bill 54-38COR, and Bill 55-38COR. Upon conclusion, we will take just a short one or two-minute recess and come back to hear Bill 18-38COR. Before we discuss the bills, I would like to set some rules of engagement for everyone to follow during these proceedings. I respectfully ask that we conduct ourselves professionally and respect each other's opinion. When you speak, please be sure to speak directly into the microphone and state your name for the title and record-keeping purposes. I ask that those who testify, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by senators present at this proceeding. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. Individuals who do not comply with these rules will be removed from the room and prohibited from further participation. We will now proceed to the testimony we have for Bill 52-38COR that was introduced by myself, an act to repeal 31013 of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code Annotated, relative to ending motor vehicle registration as enacted by Public Law 33-34. At this time, as the author of Bill 52-38COR, I am formally withdrawing the bill at this time. Following further discussion with the Guam Election Commission, it has become clear that adjustments are necessary to align with the recommendations and to ensure the legislation effectively serves its intended purposes. I will be working closely with the Guam Election Commission to develop new legislation that incorporates the necessary changes that was previously supported, while also exploring cost-cutting measures to implement a more fiscally responsible approach. I'm committed to producing and supporting policy that serves the best interest of our community, and I appreciate the Guam Election Commission's collaboration in refining this effort. I intend to introduce a revised measure that better meets Guam's needs while prioritizing financial sustainability. And at this time, I would like to ask the Director of the Guam Election Commission to come forward along with her staff. It's always nice to see who's behind the hard-working Director of Guam Election Commission that she relies on so much. Tom, come on forward. And Madam Director, just a short comment if you'd like on Bill 52-38, if you may. And please introduce yourself.
Buenos, guahusi Maria Pangolinan, Director de Comision Election Guahan. Half a day, my name is Maria Pangolinan, the Executive Director of the Guam Election Commission. And Honorable Senator Sidhu Usmaasi for introducing the bill. Sidhu Usmaasi for the time you spent with us discussing the bill. I'm sure you've learned a lot about motor voter registration, and we look forward to working with you to fine-tune the bill.
You're very welcome. So this is in concurrence, then Guam Election Commission has no objection to withdrawing the bill?
Absolutely not, Senator.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, that being said... And well, since I'm withdrawing the bill, I'm just going to move into the closing. So if there's any further comments from you, Madam Director, nothing at this time? Okay, so that being said, that concludes our discussion on Bill 52-38COR, and we are going to move over to the next legislation. Okay. And that bill has been heard. We now proceed to the testimony and discussion on Bill 53-38COR introduced by myself, Senator Telo Tidegui, an act to repeal a 9107 of Chapter 9, Title 3 Guam Code Annotated, relative to safeguarding the privacy of registered voters to be cited as the Voter Privacy Protection Act of 2025. At this time, as the Chairman, I would like to also provide some additional information, and that is with this bill, we have a fiscal note that was provided to the committee on February 28, 2025. And the physical note on this legislation basically says, "While the bill is primarily administrative in nature, per the Guam Election Commission, there may be a cost savings of approximately $5,000, primarily for the printing and distributed of related costs." And this is on Bill 53-38. I will proceed now with my opening remarks on Bill 53-38COR at this time. Also, we have had legal review of this legislation, and according to the legal counsel, there are no recommendations at this time. So Bill 53 has been introduced in collaboration with the Guam Election Commission and seeks to repeal the requirements for the Guam Election Commission to publicly post hard copies of voter registration indexes outside polling precincts. This practice originally intended to help voters confirm their precinct now presents a serious privacy risk, financial costs, and legal concern that must be addressed. In the past, and especially during the last general election, the Guam Election Commission received numerous complaints from voters concerned about their names, addresses, and date of birth being publicly displayed outside polling sites. The Guam Election Commission Legal Counsel Vince Camacho confirmed that under Guam law, posting these three pieces of information together violates personal data confidentiality laws and could expose Commission to legal liabilities. If the private company of a government agency were to publicly display personal information in the manner, it would likely be considered a data breach under existing privacy law. There is no reason why voter information should be treated any differently, especially when more secure and modern alternatives exist. In addition to privacy concerns, this outdated requirement imposes unnecessary financial costs on the Guam Election Commission. Printing and distributing physical copies of these voter registration for every polling site is expensive and redundant, especially now that voters can securely check their precinct assignments through the Guam Election Commission online portal. Removing this mandate will help streamline election procedures, modernize our system, and reduce government cost and waste. Bill 53 is simple but necessary to update our election laws ensuring the voter privacy is safeguarded while maintaining accessibility to voter information. I look forward to for our discussion on this legislation. I also, at this time, like to recognize Senator Therese Terlay. Good morning, Senator, thank you for being here. So now I will move to the here testimony and discussion on this legislation, and who has joined us today. Sitting before us is the Guam Election Commission Director. You may proceed, Madam.
Sidhu Usmaasi, Madam Chairwoman. Guahusi Maria Pangolinan, Director de Election Commission Guahan. To my right is Tom Sinogestin, and to his right was Ana Ramirez, who disappeared behind me. They make up, together with two others, make up the senior team at the Guam Election Commission. For Bill Number 5338, Sidhu Usmaasi for the opportunity to provide testimony on this bill, the Voter Privacy Protection Act of 2025. This legislation seeks to modernize voter registration verification by eliminating the outdated requirement to post physical voter registration indices at polling places. We need to protect voter privacy and security. Under current law, precinct registration indices must be publicly posted outside polling places, exposing sensitive personal information, including voter names, addresses, and dates of birth to anyone passing by. This risk creates identity theft, harassment, and unauthorized use of voter data. There have been documented reports in other jurisdictions of individuals using publicly accessible voter lists for fraudulent activities, targeted solicitations, and identity theft. Allowing unrestricted access, again, its unrestricted access not manned outside the polling places, to voter information could expose the GEC to legal liabilities under data privacy laws and potentially violate voter confidentiality protections. By removing the public display requirement, this bill ensures that voter information remains secure while maintaining easy access to registration verification through other means. The process of printing, distributing, and maintaining physical voter registration indices incurs unnecessary financial costs and consumes government resources. The GEC diverts election staff time to managing these postings, which could be more effectively used to support election security and voter assistance. Printed lists are often incomplete due to last-minute voter transfers or updates leading to confusion and inefficiencies at polling sites. The Guam Election Commission has already implemented alternative, modernized voter verification methods, including online voter lookup via the GEC website, allowing voters to securely check their registration status and precinct. Phone-based voter verification for those without internet access. In-person precinct worker assistance at polling places to help voters verify their status privately. While digital voter verification is the most secure and efficient method, the GEC is committed to ensuring accessibility for all voters. For voters without internet access, the GEC will continue to provide phone-based registration verification and will ensure that precinct officials are available for in-person assistance on Election Day. No voter will be disenfranchised by the transition to a modernized system as the proposed repeal still maintains multiple secure and accessible verification methods. Many U.S. states and territories have already eliminated public voter index postings in favor of secure digital verification systems. By following these best practices, Guam will align with modern election security standards while maintaining transparency and accessibility for all voters. Bill Number 53-38 is a critical modernization effort that, one, protects voter privacy and prevents identity theft risk; two, reduces unnecessary financial expenditures and paper waste; three, ensures accessibility through alternative voter verification methods; and four, aligns Guam election procedures with best practices in election security. The Guam Election Commission fully supports this bill as a necessary step toward a secure, efficient, and voter-friendly election process. We appreciate the opportunity to provide this testimony and remain available for any further questions. Sidhu Usmaasi.
Sidhu Usmaasi, Madam Director. At this time, if there's no one else ready to testify, I would like to turn it over first to my Vice Chair, Senator Chris Barnett, for any questions he may have.
Sidhu Usmaasi, Madam Chair, and my apologies to Ms. Maria, and Mr. Tom, and Ms. Ana, and everybody who's watching on the YouTube streaming. A very early public hearing. Madam Chair, thank you for getting us up and doing the people's business this morning. Ms. Maria, I just maybe some questions on clarification. So when I went to go vote, there's outside of the polling room at Talafolfo Elementary? I believe there's like the list, and you can kind of just look through that. So is that the list that we're talking about, eliminating at each of the polling sites?
Yes. Those, and if you notice, they were just outside. They were, according to the law, we have to place them outside the polling room in the polling site.
So I guess my only question is if someone presently, if someone shows up, they have access to this list, and they can check for whatever reason if they're registered or if someone else is a registered voter. So if this passes and we don't have that information at the polling site, would voters or other entities who go to the polling sites be able to access that information through the GEC?
Yes, absolutely. They can call us at the office. We'll man the office starting at 5:30 in the morning until the last bus leaves. They can also, at the polling site, get assistance from the precinct official.
So if I was to show up at the polling site and I wanted to see a list of the registered voters, would the precinct official then provide it to me digitally?
No, sir, that, they can request... The voter who's interested in getting a list can email us, and we can send it to them on that same day.
And then my last question I had was, is this standard in polling places and in elections across the country?
A lot of the election jurisdictions has removed this procedure.
Sorry, I know I said that was my last question, but I also wanted to ask, if this doesn't pass, would you then maybe try and redact some of the identifiers that are on the list?
No, the law specifies what is on that list, and that's what we put on.
Okay, thank you. Sidhu Usmaasi, Ms. Maria, and Sidhu Usmaasi, Madam Chair, and thank you again for the opportunity to ask questions this morning.
And get up earlier. You're very welcome, Senator Barnett. And now I'd like to turn it over to Senator, I want to say Speaker, Speaker Senator Therese Terlay.
Sidhu Usmaasi, Madam Chair. Good morning, Director, and all the hard-working staff at Guam Election Commission. Sidhu Usmaasi for your testimony. Can I just clarify again? So inside the precinct where they're going to vote, you have lists, and that's how you verify if it's me, you cross out my name, right? When I appear, show your ID, show up my ID. But these are other lists outside of that polling place? Where exactly are they?
You vote in Jotni?
Yes.
So the list will be like right at the entrance, under, by the cafeteria possibly, outside the cafeteria. So it'll be just on a table, a desk, or a cafeteria table, right outside the polling place for those specific precincts that are in the cafeteria? So there are two lists outside. One list with the list of all voters from that polling place. And then there are other lists for each precinct that too is outside the polling place.
Okay, and the private information that's on these lists, can you just clarify that?
Name, mailing address, and date of birth.
So a mailing address is, should not be seen by anybody else? And a name? Like, are we not able to verify whether people are registered voters?
What we've gathered from our legal counsel is the three sets of information is the number and the type of, the number of pieces of information and the type of information that appears together is what jeopardizes the privacy of the person.
If we altered the law to, for example, take off the date of birth, would that be a violation of their privacy? That means everybody would have access to voting lists of who's a registered voter and what is their mailing address? Because we're using mailing addresses now, or no, we're not? It's not a residential address, right?
Correct.
It's just a mailing address. So would that be all right if we just altered it that way?
I'd have to check with legal counsel.
The only reason why is because everyone should have access to who's on the voting list. Is that correct?
Yes, and they do have access. They can access it directly off our website, or if they want a digital list, they can email us and we'll send it to them.
If you send them a digital list, does it include the mailing address and the dates of birth?
Yes.
So we're going to get around that by getting digital lists?
When we receive complaints during Election Day, our complainants talk about somebody can easily pull it off, a page with her name or his name on it, and take it home and use it for whatever purpose. Yes, there are other parts of the election code that stipulates us to have to make those pieces of information public.
Which ones? I mean, which information?
Oh, what's on the voter registry, name, date of birth, mailing address, and sometimes sex.
Okay, so you agree that dates of birth and mailing addresses are going to be public information, no matter what? We just can't, this is only to make the list available by email, but not posted publicly outside of a polling, is that correct?
Senator, to the legislature and the governor is due the election comparative analysis reports that includes recommendations to update the election code. As we, we're keeping ourselves busy by working on that election comparative analysis report, and it would, it may include the addressing those parts of the code that requires us to send, to make that information public. So we will, we will continue to work at looking at the parts of the code that talks about that kind of information.
All right. So the law that we are repealing says that you're going to make easy access to voters, copies of the index of registration for that precinct at or near the precinct. So it doesn't necessarily say outside the precinct. It says at the precinct or near the precinct. And if we moved it closer to at the precinct, would that take care of your, they're not manned, they're not supervised, list?
Well, let's say it's inside the polling room, which is the cafeteria. It would be there, again, it would be unmanned because the five precinct officials per precinct would already have their duties. And if they, if, you know, if what you're alluding to is putting it inside the polling room, then that would be an additional duty if we have to let them know to man it as well.
Can someone go to the Election Commission's office and see the printed list instead of getting it by email? Can they see that hard copy? I guess I'm, you know, thinking people who aren't, I know you talked about the other ways to get it by phone. You could verify yourself, but you can't look at the whole family list, right? And see who's on there, who's registered and by family to vote. I know political parties use this list, right? They are currently taking the entire list, taking it to their campsites and marking off who they see come and vote, things like that, right?
Senator, so again, these lists, the standard practice at the GEC is yes, we give the list to the parties, the political parties, and we will give them a hard copy of precinct lists. So those would be divided, the, Senator, when we give them the whole list, hard copy, it's about that thick. And so we print those for the political parties, and currently, we also print those for the polling sites, the way it's described in law. With regard to access to all this information, again, currently, it is fully accessible to the public. And if we take, if we take this part of the law off, it will still be accessible to the public via request to GEC.
Okay. And then you said that this is done in a lot of jurisdictions, not all. Is that correct? But maybe, can you just give us more, more specifics as to how many jurisdictions?
Just dispense that. I don't have the number of how, how many jurisdictions have taken this away. But we can get that number. Most of them, as you may know, are, you know, getting rid of the paper voter registry, what we call the signature roster. Most of them have electronic poll books, that's what they're called. With that said, they remove, they don't, most of them, I don't know the number, also don't have the, the hard copy list outside the polling room.
All right, thank you. So my first reaction is just, yeah, I'm not that comfortable either with my birth date being out there, because that's your identification for many things. But, but I feel like if some people are going to have access to it, then why limit it to only some, for example, political parties versus general public, right? And that's really the only thing I'm trying to make sure I understand.
It's not limited to them, ma'am.
It's, no, anyone can get it. That's what I'm saying. You can only get it by another means instead of physical. I mean, seeing it physically at the polling place. That's what we're going to change.
Yes, that's all.
All right. Sidoz Masi and Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Turlahey. I really don't have any other questions other than just to reiterate, you know, the cost-cutting measures. You know, we're in dire times and we are looking, there's some foreseeable even worse situations where we have to find some ways to cut costs. So I just want to reiterate, the fiscal note that was provided to us by Bibi Mar is that, because I had one fiscal note that was much lower than what you had mentioned. So I just want to make sure that this fiscal note is true to form, that there will be a savings of about $5,000 or more.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I, we have to let you know, that does not include the manpower necessary to separate those lists, order the list and all, and everything that goes into getting it to the polling site.
So we're looking at a little bit more than $5,000?
Yes.
Okay, so any, any amount that this government can save and then still provide the integrity of our voting register, then I think it's good. And I appreciate you being here this morning to testify on Bill 53-38. We now conclude this hearing on this bill, and we will now move to the next bill. This bill is, if there's no further questions, Senators, we're good? Okay, if, we now discuss Bill 54-38 COR, introduced by myself and act to amend 1117 and add 1124 of Chapter 1, Title III, and amend 3104 and 3105, and 3110 of Chapter 3, Title III, and amend 14105 of Chapter 14, Title III, Guam Code annotated, relative to updating Guam's election laws and improving voter registration, election procedures, and ballot handling. A fiscal note waiver for Bill 53-38 was provided to the committee on February 28, 2025. And this fiscal note reads that it be granted a waiver pursuant to public law 12-229 as amended for the following reasons. Also, we had legal review of Bill 54-38 COR. And through legal counsel, there are no recommendations at this time. I will now proceed with the opening remarks for Bill 54-38. Like the election bills we are hearing this morning, Bill 54 was introduced at the request of the Election Commission and is a measure aimed at modernizing and improving Guam's election laws. Our elections are the foundation of our democracy, and we have a duty to ensure that we are conducted with fairness, efficiency, and transparency. This legislation clarifies and updates Guam's election laws to enhance consistency, accuracy, and accessibility. It defines district as one of the island's 19 municipalities and establishes a standardized definition of candidate's name to reflect official documents such as US birth certificate, passport, naturalization certificate, court ordered name change, marriage certificate, and any real ID act compliant identification. Excuse me. These changes ensure uniformity in candidate filings and voter record preventing inconsistencies that could impact the election process. A key update extends the voter registration deadline from 10 days to 21 days before an election. This adjustment allows additional time for verifying voter rolls and ensuring the accuracy of registration while, registry while maintaining accessibility through multiple voter registration avenues such as online registration, motor voter, volunteer voter registration, and district registrations. In the 2024 general election, Guam recorded its highest number of registered voters, 62,091. And this measure supports the continued growth of voter participation while strengthening election integrity. However, after further discussion with Guam Election Commission, this may change the extension of the 21 days as proposed earlier and take it down to 15 days. Though the bill does say 20 days, the intent of this committee is to take it down to 15, and we'd like you to also comment to that, 15 days instead of 20, 21 days. To maintain consistency in the bill also ensures that all related registration deadlines concede with a new registration cutoff. Additionally, it revises the handling of provisional ballots to match the timeline of absentee ballots, ensuring all ballots are counted fairly and equitably. Under current rules, provisional ballots must be tabulated within 10 days after an election, even though absentee ballots can still be received within that timeframe. This amendment streamlines the process and ensures that voters casting provisional ballots have the same opportunity to have their votes counted. It also strengthens registration requirements by requiring provisional ballot envelopes to meet the same standard as voter registration application ensures the individuals previously registered are poorly recorded in the system. So I welcome the opportunity for those who are here to testify on Bill 54-38. And I will now turn it over to the Director of the Guam Election Commission, Maria Pangolinan. Madam, you are recognized.
Guam, that Lucy Maria Pangolinan, Director, Election Commission, Guam. Hafadee, Madam Chairwoman and Senators. Sidoz Masi for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 54-38, which seeks to modernize and improve Guam's election laws. Many of the amendments proposed in this legislation are based on the Guam Election Commission's 2023 recommendations ensuring fair, transparent, and efficient election. Sections 2 and 3 of this legislation seek to establish clarity and consistency with the election code and standard practices of the commission by defining district as one of the 19 municipalities on the island, as well as defining the word name to specifically mean the name that appears on his or her United States birth certificate, United States passport, certificate of naturalization, court ordered name change, certificate of marriage, or any identification meeting the Real ID Act. The extension of the voter registration deadline from 10, now 15 days before an election is a necessary step to ensure all registrations are properly verified. In previous elections, a high percentage of last-minute registrations led to delays and errors in voter processing. Many US jurisdictions have 15 to 30-day deadlines, making Guam's current 10-day period one of the shortest and most challenging to administer effectively. The additional time will prevent registration errors and ensure that no voter is inadvertently disenfranchised. Under current law, the provisional ballots must be processed within 10 days, while absentee ballots are accepted for 10 days post-election. This misalignment creates administrative confusion and delays election certification. Standardizing these timelines ensures that all ballots are treated equally and improves efficiency. Bill Number 54-38 improves election security by ensuring that provisional ballots meet the same registration verification standards as all other votes. This prevents voter fraud while ensuring that eligible voters are not disenfranchised. The bill also provides clear definition of key terms preventing inconsistencies in ballot processing. Bill Number 54-38 balances the need for election integrity with accessibility, ensuring that all eligible voters can participate while preventing errors and delays. The Guam Election Commission fully supports this bill as a necessary update to modernize Guam's election laws. We appreciate the opportunity again to provide testimony. Sidoz Masi.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Director, and also like to recognize, sitting beside you is Tom Sinagastin, also from the Guam Election Commission. And also, I'd like to recognize my colleague, Secretary of the Legislature, Senator Sabrina Salas-Metanani, who's here. Thank you so much, Senator, for being here. At this time, I will turn this over now to my vice chair to ask any questions. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. I did have issues with the registration deadline. I brought this up. I think we debated this bill on the floor in the 37th Guam Legislature. So I was encouraged to hear you say that you plan to amend that 15, even, even though I kind of like that we have the shortest deadline. And you said in your testimony that it creates administrative challenges and that some registrations have been issues, but, but can you give us a number? I figure if it was so many, we would have heard about it, but give us an idea, please.
So, Senator, since online voter registration and since motor voter has, is in place, are in place now, the numbers, yes, have decreased. In the past, there were thousands, before online and motor voter, there were thousands. We had to manually enter into the system within five to six days because we needed to get the signature roster to the printer. Since the onset of online voter registration and motor voter, the number probably comes to maybe 300 to 600. And when it comes last minute, you know, within, after the 10th day, there's, it takes a little bit longer for validation than it does if they gave it to us, you know, 45 days before.
I know you're requesting 21 days, and the chair had said she's comfortable with 15. Is 15 something that you'd be able to work with?
Yes, sir.
And then I guess what would you say just to the viewing public who feels like this is, it's a big change? I mean, it's pretty significant, right? And what would you say to those who would offer that we're maybe limiting access to participation in elections?
Please register now. It's so easy to register on Guam. We do have volunteer registrars out there already where you can call them and have them come to your house. Our mayors have voter registrars at their offices. Visit our website at gec.guam.gov and register online with your current driver's license and your current Guam ID. And if all that fails, simply visit our office, and we will gladly register you at our office.
It kind of seems like registering is not really the issue, because we have like a record number of registered voters, but we had, you know, one of the most dismal turnouts at the polls, right? So, I don't know. I guess my other question is, how, does this conflict at all with the motor voter registration? Are we setting one deadline, and then is there something different with the motor voter registration?
No, so the, it's, the standard practice right now and within the law is we close all the registration 21 days before. What goes on after the 21st day is district registration, including registration in person at the office. So 21 days before, we're vetting all online registration, all registration from volunteer voter registrars, and motor voter registration. So registration still goes on at the mayor's offices and at the GEC office.
Okay. On subsection 1124, what was the motivation for including this? And this is relative to the name in the case of a candidate or nominee. The word name shall mean the name that appears on his or her United States birth certificate, passport, certificate of naturalization, court ordered name change, certificate of marriage, or any ID meeting the real ID requirements issued by a state. Is this kind of consistent with what's on the federal books?
Yes, sir. So we want to make sure that it's the legal name that appears on the ballot, and most especially on the nominating petitions.
So what's in place right now? Because, you know, for example, myself, like I had to put Darryl Christopher Barnett, which is my legal name, and then I was able to put the nickname under. So currently, what do candidates, or what are we obligated to put? Because I thought we were supposed to put our, I mean, you know, if you have Vice Speaker had to put his whole name. So what is currently the regulation?
So back a few election cycles ago, the commission was faced with the issue of a person, a candidate using his common name and not his legal name. The commission at that time adopted a policy that says all legal names have to appear on the nominating petitions, and that's the name that will appear on the ballot. It's not the specific requirement with making sure that it's the real ID's name is not in code.
So what about the nicknames? Does, are we still able to put our nicknames under our legal name? For example, can, you know, Senator Salas-Metanani put Senator Bree under her legal name? Or, you know, could I put malfunction? Because I don't see anything that addresses that.
With this, with this bill, that still remains in effect, where the second line is there. And also, inside the legal name, you can put in parentheses like Bree, like Sabrina Salas-Metanani, she can put Bree in parentheses on the nominating petitions. But the whole legal name has to appear there.
Oh, so you can fiddle with it a little bit?
Only on the nominating petitions.
I see.
On the ballot, fiddling with it is on the second line.
I got you. And that's where you could put your family names or whatever. So that remains intact, because I think that's important and for, but I don't see it anywhere. That's the thing that we addressed this bill as well in the 37th, and we couldn't find anything. So I'm wondering if we're going to put this in statute, which is basically the cementing of your existing policy? Do we also need to put in something in there that covers the nicknames, or?
It's already there.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions again, and good morning.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. I also like to recognize Senator Perez, who's with us this morning. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here. At this time, I'd like to turn it over now to Senator Trelahi.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Chair. Thank you again for your testimony. Good morning. Okay, so, just to follow up on the names, this will codify current Guam election policy for nominating petitions and ballots. So both of them, we put the formal names. But you're saying, I know there's another provision, three G C A seven one one five, that allows nicknames on a ballot, right? And you're saying on another line. And the current requirements are an identifying word or phrase, not derogatory or obscene, and not exceeding twenty letters, and that you shall put that. And sometimes I find that funny, because we prevent all campaigning at polling places, but on the ballot itself, we allow almost any words, like "vote for me," or, right, as a nickname. So I'm beginning to see that a lot, and I, I don't know, I worry about that. Like, we have this strict prohibitions against campaigning, not even wear a T-shirt, nothing anywhere in the polling place, yet on the ballot itself, they can campaign. It's kind of strange. That's common? Is this nickname practice common in other jurisdictions?
I don't know.
Yeah. If you have a chance, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, so the changing from ten to twenty-one or fifteen days is because it gives you more time to process those potential registrations and make sure that they're valid. But you say after the deadline, the fifteen days, you continue to register at the mayor's and the Guam's election? No, this is a very hard deadline, this one, the one that we're going to pass in this bill. It would be, okay. And then, when you said three hundred to six hundred would be affected, could you just explain that part one more time?
So the question that was asked with how many last-minute affidavits of registration do we receive now? Before, so the, so on the tenth day of, on the tenth day before the election, district registrars will come to our office starting after eight o'clock P M. District registration closes at eight o'clock P M. So, on average, there's about three hundred to six hundred of those that are turned in at that time. Typically, in the past, though, before online and motor voter, it would be thousands that would come in, over a thousand that would come in at that time.
Okay. So it's only now the districts out in the mayor's offices where they are bringing them in, and you're manually going to input them after the deadline?
No, that, that, no, that's been going on for a while.
But it, but it's those, it, the, the manual entries are only being done now for those that are out being registered in the mayor's offices. We bring them in by the deadline, and then you manually enter by the deadline. That's why we're changing it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What about this, on section six, it says we're changing the time of service for a registration clerk. It from twenty-one days before it ends, no, sorry, shall begin forty-five days. Okay, that's fine. Beginning earlier, registration clerks, that's great. All right. Sorry, I read that wrong. And then, I think that's it. Oh, yes. So the provisional ballots, the, when you say you want it to match the timing of the absentee ballots, both of them look like ten days to me. Maybe just explain that one more time.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. That one is a little bit confusing. So, the absentee, the off-island absentee ballots, the law tells us that we can receive them up until five thirty P M. on the tenth workday after the election, okay? So, but the provisional ballots, they tell us, the law tells the Guam Election Commission to count those ballots within the ten workdays. With this bill, what it will do is it will give us a little bit of a leeway to count those provisional ballots. Right now, we're forced to. What happens right now is two persons or two people go to the post office, be there at five o'clock, rush back, because we're going to count both provisional and absentee ballots. Excuse me. With the change in the bill, what can happen, the most important for us at G E C, is that we have a little bit more time to vet the provisional ballots, okay? So we, now we have a little bit more time to vet those provisional ballots. We can count those ballots together with the absentee ballots, maybe on the eleventh day, or the twelfth day, or even the fifteenth day after the election.
How do you calculate that? Is that the ten working days after the election?
Inside the law, we were guided by our legal counsel that if it's within eleven days, then it's always a workday if it's not specified. If it's more than eleven days, it's calendar days. So we also want to make sure that if it's, if the bill is amended, we specify workdays versus calendar days.
Okay. So what, I guess I don't see, what would be the deadline then to process provisional ballots if this change is made? It just says prior to the certification of an election.
So what's being addressed is when they're tabulated, when they're counted. That's what's being addressed.
Yes. And right now, you're required to do that within ten days of the election, but now this bill would change it to say prior to certification of the election, you count the provisional ballots. But is there a deadline?
No.
Is there a deadline to certification of the election?
No. Only, there's only a deadline for the primary election. There's no deadline for the general election.
So would this arguably, like, allow us not to know the results for a while, while you are counting the provisional ballots? For example, if you're not able to meet or count the ballots, we could, it could go on and on?
Yes. So, with, you know, with what is discussed here, there could be, there could be a fifteen business day deadline, or, you know, maybe twenty calendar days. It depends. And it gets complicated because there's a holiday in there. It's Veterans Day in there. So, we, we, we just want maybe three to five days more to be able to vet those provisional ballots. So we get now, on average, about a hundred eighty to two hundred provisional ballots. The voter has seven workdays to come in to cure after we call them. And then, you know, we want to be able to look at those two hundred ballots some more to see if we can count them before tabulation.
All right. Does this affect your counting of the absentee ballots? Are those the same or different?
Right now, the law says, the law doesn't specify when to count the absentee ballots.
All right. Sizou Smasi, thank you, Madam Chair. You're very welcome, Senator Trelahi. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Bree. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Director Pangolinen and Tom. So, yeah, just, you know, I think a lot of the great questions were asked, but just a concern about the names. And so, you know, coming from Guam, we often give ourselves different names, whether the Spanish version, you know, or the American version of our names. So is there any way that this bill, I guess, prioritizes one over the other?
Senator Perez, thank you for the question. What it would do is make sure that the policy that the Guam Election Commission has adopted is codified to say that the candidates use their official legal name on the first line of the ballot and on the nominating petitions. The, if the, if the Spanish derivative of your name is not your legal name, then it have to appear on the second line.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And I guess, I guess the concern too, general concern, is that, you know, what changes would that make on, you know, the outcome of elections? So, that's, I think, generally what, what is the, what is your take on that?
Again, ma'am, I don't know how to campaign, but with regard to the running of the elections, it makes it consistent for, consistent and fair for all the candidates involved.
Thank you for that response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Perez. A lot of questions were asked and answered them. And again, just for the record, as what we agreed to, I know the bill says twenty-one, but we're taking down to fifteen. I think that would be enough time. Other than that, this bill has been heard, duly heard, and if there's no further comments by the Guam Election Commission, I'd like to move on to the next bill. Being there is none, we're going to be moving on to bill now. Bill fifty-five dash thirty-eight is our next bill. This was introduced by myself, an act to repeal and reenact one seven one one six and one seven one one eight of chapter seventeen, title three of Guam Code Annotated, relative to clarifying reporting requirements and establishing a quarterly reporting system for Guam election campaign finances. There is a fiscal note that was provided on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and it is a note granting a waiver pursuant to public law twelve dash twenty-two. This was also vetted through legal and reviewed by them with no recommendations at this time. As the main sponsor, I'd like to open with Bill fifty-five dash thirty-eight. Like the previous election bills headed, heard this morning, Bill fifty-five was introduced at the request of the Guam Election Commission, which seeks to clarify campaign financial reporting requirements and establish a quarterly reporting system for campaign contributions and expenditures. Currently, the Guam Election Commission publishes campaign finance reports only after the election cycle concludes, limiting real-time oversight and public scrutiny. More frequent reporting would provide standardized disclosures to help voters make an informed decision and reinforce trust in the electoral system. A quarterly reporting system for campaign finance would increase transparency and ensure that voters, regulatory bodies, and the media have timely access to financial disclosures. Regular reporting would also help identify financial discrepancies and potential violations early, allowing regulatory bodies to address these issues and provide guidance before the issue escalates. By implementing quarterly reports, the Guam Election Commission could detect and correct irregularities more efficiently and ultimately preventing mismanagement and noncompliance before elections take place. Quarterly reporting would improve compliance and guidance for candidates and campaign treasurers. While Guam Election Commission offers campaign finance seminars, many reporting errors are discovered too late in the election cycle to be effectively addressed. More frequently, reporting would allow the Guam Election Commission to provide real-time support, reduce filing errors, promote accountability, and strengthen Guam's election process for all stakeholders. Lastly, on page four, line four of this legislation, it was not in our discussion to incorporate this section into the bill. However, ensuring these bills are heard in a way, way in advance for an election, I accepted to introduce this bill, but I do plan on striking out on page four, line four, where it says number three from this legislation. I look forward to hearing discussion on this bill and would like to recognize the Director of the Guam Election Commission, Madam Maria Pangolinen. You are now recognized.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Chairwoman. This, and Sizou Smasi for allowing us again to testify on Bill fifty-five thirty-eight, which seeks the improvement, improved transparency and accountability in campaign finance reporting by establishing a quarterly reporting schedule. This measure is directly aligned with G E C's two thousand twenty-three recommendations. Currently, campaign finance reports are not thoroughly reviewed until after an election cycle, limiting time, limiting timely under oversight. Under this system, the public does not receive full financial disclosure before voting. The G E C is unable to provide guidance to candidates in real time. Late reviews have reviewed and undisclosed or misreported funds after election results are finalized. For example, the two thousand twenty-four election campaign finance reports totaling one million five hundred fifteen thousand two hundred sixty dollars in contributions and one million two hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred nineteen dollars in expenditures are still under review, even though the election has long been certified. By implementing quarterly reporting, G E C will identify errors or violations early, allowing candidates to correct them, ensure voters have up-to-date financial data before elections, reduce last-minute burdens on both campaigns and regulators. The current system forces G E C to conduct mass audits in a short period, leading to increased overtime pay for staff, delays in addressing potential violations, legal disputes, and financial discrepancies that could have been prevented. By shifting to quarterly reporting, G E C can distribute workload evenly, reducing overtime and administrative strain, lower enforcement costs by identifying and preventing errors before they escalate, improve financial transparency for voters and oversight bodies. We understand that candidates may be concerned about increased reporting requirements. However, under Bill fifty-five dash thirty-eight, quarterly reports are simplified, only requiring candidates to carry forward balances from previous reports. Candidates will have more time to correct mistakes, reducing accidental violations and penalties. Bill number fifty-five thirty-eight is a practical reform that strengthens transparency, improves financial oversight, and enhances public trust in Guam's electoral system. The G E C supports quarterly reporting for several reasons. First, it encourages candidates to turn in the majority of their contributions and expenses reports earlier, leaving more time to focus on campaigning and giving the G E C ample time to advise candidates and committees on proper reporting requirements, ensuring that campaign finances are reviewed in a timely manner, and giving candidates more timely notice of any errors in their reports, such as incorrect such as incorrect or incomplete reporting. This will allow candidates more time to make needed corrections. Quarterly reporting is a standard practice in many jurisdictions, and adopting it in Guam will ensure fair, honest, and well-regulated elections. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Madam Director, and also like to recognize too, the right of you, Tom Sinagastin from the Guam Election Commission as well. I'd also like to recognize Speaker Blas, who has joined us this morning. At this time, I will save my comments to the end and allow my colleagues to open with their questions. My Vice Chair, Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, and thank you again for the opportunity to ask questions again. I did, I think I heard you, you said that you plan to strike?
Yes.
Page four?
Yes, it's on page four, line four. All that section will be stricken out. You notice in the testimony provided by the Guam Election Commission, there is no mention of this particular section in there, so we are striking that out.
Right, and I recall that we had debated a bill, if not the same bill, but a similar bill, that had a similar section in there. And just for the public, good morning, Manana Sidoos. Thank you for watching. Just I'll share with you this section that the Chair plans to strike from the bill, reads "The transfer of any remaining surplus or deficit to a new organization expressly designated for a campaign related to a district electoral officer issue, which is not the same officer issue currently or previously held by a candidate party or committee." And so maybe you can riddle me this, Ms. Maria, but would this allow a scenario where you have a senator who is currently a senator raising funds, and then they decide, you know, halfway through their term, "I'm going to run for governor," or whatever? Would they then be able to transfer that money that they raised in the senatorial office to their gubernatorial campaign?
I think what happened here, Senator, is that this section was put in there, but it shouldn't be there. What, what, what currently happens, or what currently is mandated, is that if you're running, if you receive contributions as a senatorial candidate, you cannot take that onto your gubernatorial candidacy.
You can only give it to the party or a similar office?
You can only give it to the party or another candidate running for the same office.
But this section would allow what the scenario I just asked you about, right? If we pass this law, it basically would allow me, if I'm running for senator, to raise a million dollars for my senatorial campaign, and then be like, "Oh, no, I'm going to run for governor, and I'm going to transfer all this money I raised." So this bill, as written, if passed, would allow for that scenario?
Yes, but I think the intent of the law, the way it stands, is to make sure that those, those contributors, right? They want you to run for senator. They didn't want you to run for governor. So they want you to use your money towards a senatorial candidate.
Am I able to ask, because you said the section's not supposed to be in there, but yet here it is?
It could, yeah, it, so remember that we send recommendations to this legislature and the governor. So it could have been that this section was part of another, another recommendation directly under the campaign finance schedule reform.
So you at no time made a recommendation that candidates should be allowed to do this?
From my recollection, I don't, that, I don't remember making this.
All right. I guess the other question I had too was with the quarterly reporting. What, what would the schedule be? Do you already know what the schedule would be for that?
So, yes, so, for example, if you've already submitted your organizational report, no? So you already notified the Guam Election Commission that you're campaigning for senator. So you submitted that. With that organizational report, you already submitted your finances up to five working days when you submitted your organizational report. You would have brought forward your surplus from your last campaign that will show on your organizational report, and you would show all the activity that you've had up until the day, five days before you submit the organizational report. Then what happens is, today is March, the end of the calendar quarter, it's March 31st, okay? But you don't file April 15th. You will file July 15th, because the reform says it's a complete calendar quarter. So your next filing date would be July 15th in this scenario.
And then what would the filing date after July 15th be?
Okay, then it's July 15th, then October 15th, then January 15th.
Okay, but because you also have in the bill the requirement for the pre and the post-election reports?
Yes, you know, there, if the Madam Chair and the committee, you may want, you know, you may want to remove that. That still is there, because there may be a last-minute push for more contributions, more expenses, that may be, may be something that the voters may want to know. But with regard to the preliminary and post-elect, preliminary and final reports after each election, that can be eased, that requirement can be easily removed, and there's still very, very transparent financial data for each candidate.
Right, yeah, that's why I was asking what the reporting dates would be. So July 15th and then October 15th, which is more than 10 days after where primary elections usually held. And I know that a lot of this is because you have the staffing issues. So I was just wondering if you're going to do quarterly, and then on top of that, the two reports, which are 10 days before the primary, and then, what is it, 10 days after?
10 days after the primary, 20 days after the general.
So those are going to remain in place if, if the bill passes as written?
More efficient and effective, remove those requirements.
Okay, okay, all right. And then just going back to the section three, I just also wanted to highlight that even though it's going to be struck, it would also create a scenario where you have someone who is maybe not running again, and then they could transfer it to, not necessarily themselves, right? And so I'm, I'm very encouraged that you agree that this doesn't belong in the bill, because I remember it caused a lot of hot debate. I mean, it was my PP, the debate on this particular section in the 37th. So thank you, Ms. Maria, and Mr. Tom, and Sisus Massey, again, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And I'd like to turn it over now to Senator Trelahi. You are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, again, thank you to the Guam Election Commission and Director Maria. All right, so the intent of the bill is to mandate quarterly reporting of finances, contributions, and expenditures. And you're saying that would be more often than the current preliminary and post and supplemental reporting requirements?
Yes, Senator, depending on when the organizational report is filed or when you start campaigning. Because you can start campaigning as soon as the day after certification, campaign for the next election. So that would give you, that would make you campaigning two and a half years.
Okay, so right now, if you're campaigning for two years, are you required to report and accept right before the primary? 10 days prior to the primary? Is that the only requirement right now?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, so this would for, as we go along, if people are campaigning, that would show more what's happening as we go along. So, so that sounds good. My, I guess I'm just trying to figure out the dates, right? Because right now, we do 10 days before the primary, and then after the primary, and then before the general and after the general. And this before the primary, for example, in 2024, the primary was August 3rd. We were required to file our report July 24. But according to your quarterly reporting, we would have to have filed by July 15, which is earlier. So it wouldn't necessarily capture all the data that we currently capture up to the primary, right? So between July 15 and July 24, for example, that wouldn't be caught. That's the difference. And then we don't have to file after the primary all the way until October 15, whereas right now, we are filing 10 days after the primary, and the newspapers are always running, "How much did we spend in that primary?" right? So that's a big change in information to me. So at first, I thought that's what we were doing with the bill, but the bill currently reads, "But we're going to do all of it together. We're going to do the pre and the post and the quarterly reporting." But you're saying it was actually supposed to take out the pre and the post and just replace it with quarterly only? I have a little bit of concern about that, because I like to see immediately after the elections, probably like everyone else, how much did everybody spend, right? And same thing with the general. I think especially with the general. According to the quarterly reporting, we wouldn't have to report what anyone spent in a general election until January, right? That's a long time. That's just like, I don't know, not relevant anymore. I think they want to know right away. And maybe we're just used to that.
Okay, Senator, you brought up very good points, okay? And maybe, maybe you senators will shed light on it. So what happens is, most of the contributions and expenditures would have been reported by July 15th, right? So maybe-
Under quarterly reporting.
Yes, yes, by July 15th, when in fact, with the current schedule, all of that will only be reported 10 days before July 24th, right? It would be only be reported then. So with that said, then the amount of scrutiny, mind you, would only be from July 24th without even our review, without giving the candidates a chance to correct the mistakes or the complete, what's, bring the complete information. So with your line of questioning, Senator, then maybe put back in the post-election, the, the final report for each election, 10 days after the primary and 20 days after the general.
Okay, currently, we file supplemental reports.
Correct.
How do those, those look like right now for, so for the 2024 primary, the supplemental report, you do the, you do the, after the primary report was, the primary was on August 3rd. The 10th day after the primary was August 16, and then we were required to file supplemental on October. And so under the quarterly reporting, it would be, the primary would take place on August 3rd, and we would report in October, same as the supplemental, but not the 10 days or the 20 days after.
Senator, the supplementals for after the primary are for only those candidates that did not make it to the general?
That made it to the general.
That did not make it to the general.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Because you will-
I'm using your calendar. Okay, so that's what those are for?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And so those that made it to the general would only have to report, and right now, 10 days prior to the general or quarterly, which would be October 15 for a November general election? Okay, all right, okay, I see the difference now, and thank you for clarifying that. Back to this provision on number, well, did we mean to take out the, there's some parts here where you take out the word, the aggregate. For example, on page three, line 10, I think the current requirement says that we're going to report the amount, data received, data deposited of the contributions of each donor who makes a contribution of more than $100. And in the existing statute, it says something about an aggregate. If, if you could just clarify that, maybe after the hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
And then this, the other difference I'm seeing is that you want copies of all the bank statements versus right now, we just report what our balances are.
Correct. That would give us more information on the promptness of the deposits. You're required to promptly deposit all your contributions. And so with that said, currently, we don't have any way to validate that.
I see, because we report the date of deposit, but you want to validate it with the statements?
Yes, that, Senator, if you recall, that would help both the candidate and GEC reconcile faster. With us having the information, we won't need to go back and forth with the candidate or the treasurer to reconcile the finances.
Okay, thank you. And then on page three, subsection C on the bottom, it talks about you, you can stop filing your quarterly reports when, number one, is the depletion of campaign funds or elimination of a deficit, that makes sense. Number two, though, says "The establishment of a new organization for subsequent campaign under the condition that the new organization pertains to the same electoral office in the case of a candidate or serves the same purpose or addresses the same issue in the case of a committee." This one doesn't make that much sense to me. Number three says "The transfer of the surplus to a new campaign," right? That's the one we're going to take out of the bill. But it talks about the transfer of the money. So number two doesn't. It just says, if I establish, I guess, yeah, what are, what are we envisioning here? That I'm going to establish a new organization for a subsequent campaign for the same electoral office?
Okay, so Senator, Senator Teresa Lai ran for 2024. She still has money in the bank, so she's, she's filing surplus reports, right? So what happens is Senator Trelahi now decides that she's going to run for 2026. It's a new report now.
It's a new, no.
Organization.
A new organization report?
Now, it's a new organization now, because the old organization was Senator Trelahi running for the 2024 election.
And this is a new requirement?
No.
This is same?
It's the same.
And does this allow the transfer of the money to the, to this new organization?
Yes, because you're running for senator.
Same office, you mean?
Same office.
Okay, and then, so this envisions a transfer of the money. Should that be written in there? Because it's, you know, like on number three, where it says "Transfer of the surplus to the new organization." So number two, it doesn't say the transfer of the money to the new organization.
Yes.
And then, and this used to be restricted to, we transfer it to somebody in the same party, or we can transfer it to some, but this one doesn't. I could transfer it to any organization or only my own organization?
So number three is supposed to have been, right? Isn't it number three?
Yeah, we're going to delete number three. That's transfer to a new office, new, new person.
It's going to be stricken out.
What about number two?
Number two is good, but it, you, you, you brought up a good point about transferring the money to the new organization as well.
So same electoral office in the case of a candidate means, for example, a senatorial candidate would have to transfer to a new organization for a senatorial office?
For the next election cycle.
For the same candidate?
Yes.
Okay, Sisus Massey, thank you, Madam Chair.
Very welcome. Thank you for those questions. I'm sorry, Speaker Blas? Okay, Senator Perez, you are recognized. No questions? Okay, I'd also like to recognize Senator Shelley Cavill, who's here this morning. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions at all?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No question at the moment. Buenas in half a day, everyone.
And viva mes chamaro. Viva. Okay, well, that, that being said- Okay, well, that, that being said, there are going to be a markup meeting, especially for this particular legislation, Madam Director, to, to take care of some of those concerns, especially those ones brought up by Senator Lahey on section two, you know, just to make it stronger. Okay, so that being said, in closing, we have heard Bill, in closing, we have heard Bill 55-38. And there's no further questions or comments. We've concluded this public hearing for this bill and all the other bills. And I'd like to thank the Guam Election Commission for working with my office. I appreciate all your hard work. And please give our kudos and many sidoos masi's to all those people working at the Guam Election Commission. We know they work very hard and we appreciate all they do for us. So that being said, we're going to take a short two-minute recess just so that we can clear the room and allow for the next bill, which is Bill 18-38. Sidoos Masi, we'll take a one-minute recess. Or Bill 18. Hafadeh, welcome back and thank you for joining us again. Viva Mes Chamorro. I also, before we get started, I'd just like to recognize again my colleagues who are here with me, my vice chair, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Teresa Lahey, our speaker, Senator Frank Blas, Speaker Frank Blas, Senator Shelley Cavill. And thank you, Sean Gumentato, Senator Sean Gumentato, for being here, as well as the author of the legislation on Bill 18-38, Senator Perez. And at this time, I'd like to move to Bill 1838 COR, introduced by Senator Perez, Senator Telo Tidigui, Senator Teresa Lahey, and Senator Chris Barnett, which is an act to amend 5707A of Article 12, Chapter 5, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated: Relative Procedures of Judicial Review Decisions Made by the Public Auditor in Procurement Appeals. There was a fiscal note that was provided to the committee on February 10, 2025. In that fiscal note, it reads, "The proposed legislation does not contain revenue-generating provisions, nor does it appropriate any additional funding source to the OPA. Further, the proposed legislation does not impose additional mandates to the affected entities and is only, and it, as it only seeks to amend the procedural judicial review of decisions made by the OPA in procurement appeals. Given the administrative nature of the proposed legislation, the Bureau does not anticipate a direct financial impact to the government of Guam. However, the Bureau recognizes the benefits of this proposed legislation to include the potential cost containment afforded to the OPA. Due to several unknown factors, to include the varying complexities of procurement appeals and the amount of time spent in judicial review, the Bureau is unable to determine an approximate cost savings at this time. Also, Bill 18-38 COR was reviewed by our legal counsel with no recommendations at this time." I would now like to turn the floor over to the sponsor of Bill 18-38. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and especially for scheduling this public hearing on this important measure. Bill 18-38 seeks to reform judicial review of decisions made by the Office of Public Accountability in Procurement Appeals by requiring that these procedures be treated similar to judicial review of other administrative agencies under Guam law. As it stands currently, the judicial review process for decisions made by the OPA in regard to procurement appeals is treated as a civil action between two parties in which the OPA is named as a defendant in the case. This process diverts financial, operational, and human resources from the OPA, which could be used for more necessary critical purposes and so that they need, in order to respond to the civil action and court proceedings. As you stated in the fiscal note, the estimated cost is between $15,000 to $20,000 for the last three years due to a few, a few appeals on the OPA procurement decisions. And this amount would have been a lot higher if the OPA did not recuse itself from a high-profile procurement appeal that has been litigated for the past 12 years. Under the Administrative Adjudication Act, the procedure for judicial review of administrative decisions generally follows a different process. Instead of filing a regular civil action, the party seeking judicial review submits a petition for a writ of mandate against the agency. The amendment to the law proposed in Bill 18-38 would eliminate, eliminate having the OPA be named as a defendant in a civil action, which can expose the OPA to unnecessary and unwarranted litigation expenses from hiring legal counsel, filing motions, briefs, discovery requirements. Bill 18-38 should bring judicial review of OPA decisions in line with those of other administrative decisions, which require procurement appeals to be decided in the Superior Court. This measure was created in close collaboration with the OPA, which created a white paper on this matter. It was subsequently introduced and passed in the 37th Guam Legislature as Bill 328-37, which included another component to require agencies to respond and take corrective action based on audits. However, it was vetoed, and in the veto message, no issue was taken with this particular section of the bill as proposed by Bill 18-38. To reiterate, Bill 18-38 would prevent OPA from having to divert necessary resources in order to respond to litigation and thereby reducing the overall cost of operations and allowing the OPA to fulfill their primary duties more efficiently and effectively. That increases transparency and accountability in how the vital public funds are being spent towards the needs of our community. I would like to thank my co-sponsors, Senator Tidigui, Senator Lahey, and Senator Barnett, and look forward to testimony as well as the support from my other colleagues. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Perez. Okay, we will now hear testimony on, on the bill and discussion. So I would like to call to the table OPA former speaker and Senator B.J. Cruz, OPA Director, as well as Mitch Thompson, attorney, to come forward. And I ask that you speak directly into the microphone if you can. Don't be shy. I know the two of you are not shy individuals. Just move that microphone really close and they can control your volume, but it has to be at a good level in front, so we can also hear. Other than that, public auditor, you are recognized first, sir. Please state your name for the record as well.
Hafadeh, my name is Benjamin Cruz. I am currently the public auditor of Guam. With me is legal counsel Mitchell Thompson, who wrote the white paper. And I don't know if I need to testify after that beautiful introduction done by sponsors of the bill. Just adopt the, her comments is my comments for this morning. But thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 18-38. As we did in Bill 328-37, which was ultimately vetoed by the governor of Guam, the Guam Office of Public Accountability continues to support the intent of this new bill as it aims to clarify judicial review of the OPA decision on procurement appeal and help the OPA be more efficient. We believe the current practice of appealing an OPA procurement appeal decision is improper and unnecessarily causes the OPA to expend precious resources to retain attorney, a lawyer, to defend the decision in the Superior Court and the Supreme Court. We believe that the procedure used by, should be like any other decision of a trial judge, wherein the prevailing party should be, should defend the decision on appeal. Currently, when an appeal of a decision of the OPAs, the OPA is listed as a party defendant, OPA is served with a notice of appeal and required to provide an answer. OPA then has to engage lawyer, a lawyer, to file an answer, attend hearings, and represent our office. This costs money. Because there have been fewer procurement appeals and fewer appeals of our decisions, we've only had to spend $16,000 per year for the last four years. Had my predecessor not recused herself in our office from the DFS versus Lotte procurement appeal, OPA would have been listed as the principal party defendant. God knows how much we would have had to spend, would have been spent for legal services over the last 12 years this case has been litigated. The GIA has spent tens of millions of dollars in legal fees. Fortunately, their contract with Lotte has Lotte reimbursing them for their legal expenses. OPA would not have had that protection. We believe that the appeal process should be like the case, like the court, Nora. Now, the trial judge renders a decision and they are appealed to the Supreme Court without the trial judge hiring an attorney to defend the decision on appeal. The prevailing party defends and protects the decision on appeal. I have attached the white paper prepared by Mr. Mitchell Thompson explaining the need for this legislation to pass. We thank Senators Perez for her and her co-sponsors for introducing the bill. Thank you for consideration of our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, public auditor. Next is Mitch Thompson. Please state your name for the record and speak directly into the mic. Thank you.
Madam Chair, committee members, my name is Mitch Thompson. By way of introduction, I've been practicing law here on Guam for almost 40 years. And currently, my office is working with the Office of Public Accountability on various matters. I'm pleased to be here this morning to testify in support of Bill 1838. This bill corrects a problem and it allows judicial review of decisions by the OPA to be handled like other reviews of other Guam administrative agency decisions. The usual procedure when a party is challenging a decision by an administrative agency is that that party files in the Superior Court a petition seeking judicial review. Sometimes it's technically denominated a writ of mandate. And the prevailing party, the other side in the agency case, is the one that defends or seeks to uphold the agency decision. The agency is named as a respondent, but it, the other, the side that won in front of the agency is denominated the real party in interest, and it's on the real party in interest to defend the agency decision. And that's the way all other administrative agency decisions on Guam are handled. But for various technical reasons, which this bill will correct, currently, if a party wants to appeal a decision by the OPA, they don't file a petition for judicial review. Instead, they file a regular old civil lawsuit. They name the OPA as a defendant. And the OPA has to file an answer and there often is discovery. In other words, there can be written interrogatories or written questions directed to the OPA. There can be depositions. There can be document requests. And this is very different than the usual procedure when a party seeks judicial review of an administrative agency. Normally, the way it's, it's supposed to be done with every other administrative agency is there's no depositions, discovery. You go on the record before the administrative agency. But because the current procedure is a regular old civil action against the OPA, technically, the OPA has, may have to respond to discovery requests. And this all costs, this all costs money. And it forces the OPA to divert its resources, both its staff and also its monetary resources and hiring attorney away from its core functions and instead have, has to defend itself in court when that's not the way it works for any other administrative agency. So this bill will correct that situation, allow a party that wants to appeal a decision by the OPA to follow the same process that it would follow if it was appealing a decision by the Civil Service Commission, by a professional licensing board, by the CLB, and so forth. We're just going to bring that process for the OPA in line with every other administrative agency on Guam. And while, if this bill is enacted, I'm kind of putting myself out of a job, but it's good public policy and I, I hope that the legislature sees fit to enact Bill 18-38. And I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Thompson. And this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. I think the author of the legislation would like to go last. So I'm going to go ahead with my vice chair of judicial, and that is Senator Teresa Lahey to, if you have any questions, please.
Sidoos Masi, thank you, Attorney Thompson and our public auditor, Speaker Cruz, for your testimony and for encouraging this. It's, I support it. And I just want to, as you say, this is how administrative appeals are done from other agencies. And I just want to confirm that, you know, we talked earlier about appeals from trial courts are going to the Supreme Court, of course. But in this case, appeals from decisions in agencies are going to go to the Superior Court of Guam. All right. And have you had any cases where, where the parties, the prevailing party in the dispute did not participate in the court cases? Like they let the OPA defend their decision versus themselves?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lahey. Speaker Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here and testifying. Did I hear this correctly, that there was a similar piece of legislation, the 37th, that addressed this, but yet was vetoed by the governor?
Yes. At the time that the bill was, actually, the problem was when Mr. Thompson wrote the legislation for us, I also told him that he should put in, to prepare legislation that also addressed writs of mandate because there was a question that the previous legislature had been saying, how, how do you enforce your, your, your decisions? And so we thought maybe a writ of mandate to the court to enforce, I mean, our performance audits. And both of them were included in the same bill. The governor's opposition was to the writ of mandate directing her, directing the executive agencies to respond to the potential writ of mandate directing- agencies to respond to the potential writ of mandate directing the executive branch to do something. They were not happy with that. They didn't, they believed that it was inappropriate, it was a violation of the separation of powers to be directing the executive to do anything. We could recommend, but we can't direct them, get a writ of mandate to direct them to do it.
Was it your feeling that had the two issues been separated, that this issue, if it addressed by itself, would have passed muster with her and he would have signed it? If there was any indication in the veto message that there was an issue with this particular part?
As was mentioned by Senator Perez, and correct me, Senator, if I'm wrong, the veto message had no problem with the first part.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Speaker Blas. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to just say that I support the bill, and I'm very grateful that Senator Perez offered me a cosponsorship of it, and I'm hoping that we can get it through, pass it, and then be consistent in overriding any veto attempt, because there was a lot of inconsistency with that in the previous term, that I'm hoping we don't see in this one. As you know, many of the people out there are saying that we have a veto-approved 38th Guam Legislature, so I think this could be one of the bills that really puts that to the test. So Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair, again for the opportunity to speak this morning, and have a good day.
Thank you so much, Senator Barnett. At this time, Senator Shelley Cavill, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Muenen, again. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few questions. I was just thinking, without clear timeframes, procurement disputes could take longer to resolve. Delaying government projects and contracts, possibly. What is the average time for a judicial review case to be resolved under existing procedures? No timeframe?
Years.
Years? Wow.
In judicial. And for our office, we have a timeframe, and you would have noticed that we issued an opinion, I mean, a decision the other day, and we'll be issuing another decision later on this, today or this week, for another procurement appeal. We issued, within the office, 30 days after the hearing or 30 days after the findings of fact is filed, so we try to move things along. Sometimes a little too fast. A couple of times, attorneys have asked us to, can we have our own schedule, not your schedule? But I keep telling them, I don't want to be accused of delaying, but they have. But I have no control after it goes to court, and there are a couple of decisions, I'm up on appeal in Supreme Court, that stood and were resolved.
Senator, if I could follow up on the Public Auditor's comments, if Bill 1838 is adopted, it should, and I'm putting that "should" in air quotes, should make the judicial review of OPA decisions quicker, because when you have a regular old civil lawsuit, a large chunk of the time for that case while it's pending in court is during what they call discovery, where the parties are sending written questions to each other, taking depositions and what have you. But in a special proceeding, in like judicial review for every other administrative agency, they don't have that, and so we skip a step. And so in theory, at least, it's, the judicial review process should be quicker if this bill is adopted.
Thank you, Sidoz Masi. I don't have further questions. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. Senator Gumentato, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Public Auditor and Attorney Thompson, for being with us today. Just have a bit of a question, but let me just kind of lead into it. BBMR in their fiscal note stated that, based on the comments that were received by the OPA on Section 2 of a similar bill that was mentioned earlier by our Speaker in the 37th Guam Legislature, the current judicial review process caused the OPA to expend its budget in order to secure legal services if and when the agency is a named defendant in a civil suit in the Superior Court of Guam. Now, the Public Auditor had reported in the past expenditures of $15,000 to $20,000 per year for the last three years due to only a few decision appeals to the Superior Court of Guam. So for the record, aside from seeking legislation amending 5GCA Section 5707A, what legal options, if any, does the OPA have in challenging or otherwise questioning the appropriateness of being named as a defendant in a civil lawsuit involving an OPA decision?
Well, Senator Gumentato, the problem is, because of the somewhat awkward current wording of Section 5707, our Supreme Court has determined that an appeal of an OPA decision is to be treated as a civil action, where the OPA is named as a defendant. And the Supreme Court has spoken. If the legislature amends Section 5707, that prior determination by the Supreme Court is out the window because the law has changed. And so that's, I think, effectively, the only way that the OPA cannot, can ask not to be a defendant, because if the laws change, it will be clear that we follow the regular judicial process for every other administrative agency, such that the OPA is not named as a defendant.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Thompson, and I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to be here today. Appreciate you.
You're very welcome, Senator Gumentato. And at this time, I really have no questions for this legislation. We've gone down this road before, believed in it, and believe that it will save some money, you know, and that's what, something that we need to do in this body, is to recognize any cost-cutting measures that we can as we move forward, as we address any concerns with these cuts that may be happening, and most especially living within our means. I'd like to thank the OPA's office, especially for all the hard work and showing us these areas that may have some issues and that we have to cut even more.
I want to thank Mr. Thompson, actually, because he was the one that brought it to my attention. He even volunteered to do the white paper. He said, "I just don't understand why you're wasting your money on having me go to court." And I said, "You realize that would mean less for you?" And he goes, "But it's the right thing to do." So I want to thank Mr. Thompson and recognize that it was his idea. He brought it to me.
Thank you so much. Yes, Attorney, I read the white paper very thorough. I don't think we would have had any problems if we had that beforehand, but we are here today, and it is what it is. I do have a real short question to ask you. OPA Director, Public Auditor, do you think we need an oversight on OPA? I mean, it was mentioned in, from one of the other agencies, I think it was GMMH, she said that there should be an oversight on OPA.
If the legislature decides to, wants to have an oversight, I welcome it. I have no problem with oversights. I mean, it is your responsibility, but it's ludicrous, but...
It is ludicrous. I just wanted to bring it up for the record. My plans is never, not to have one. I think the work that the OPA office is doing is excellent work, and it helps guide us too along the way. So that being said, I'm going to allow the author of the legislation, the good Senator Perez from Baragata Heights, to do her closing or have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to the Office of the Public Accountability for developing a correction to the law and to streamline the process. I think when we're talking about the public accountability, we're looking to protect the vital funds that are used from our, from our government to help our community. And so whatever way that we can use these resources more, you know, preciously, I support those efforts. I do support the other part of the bill that was introduced, but I bifurcated that into another bill, and I hope to see a public hearing on that bill as well. So thank you for your, our hard work and patience. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If there is no other further questions, I will complete and conclude the discussion on Bill 18-38 COR. That being said, my office will continue to accept written testimonies on today's hearing within five business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archivicious Floris Suite 407 in the DNA Building in Hagatia. You may also send written testimony to my office via email, senator telot, don't forget the "t," at gmail.com. Thank you all for your participation. Create a great day, and the time now is 10:05 PM. Sidoz Masi, Biba Meschamoro.